The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
Well, good afternoon. We're called a special board meeting to order. And we have four board members present. And first item on the agenda here is discussion item liability insurance presentation. And we have Jody Tross. And did you want to give her an introduction there, Melissa?
We are lucky to have Jody Tross here with us. She comes from Community Insurance. She has, she works with the district for a number of years. And, and she's here to present today on training that she does throughout the state for a number of municipalities and school districts on harassment, sexual harassment, diversity, and workplace bullying. As you know, the district has done a number of outreach efforts to our staff and our students on this topic. And now we're here to present some training to the board as well. So I'll turn it over to Jody.
Melissa, can I repeat, are you okay? No. Is that better? Am I not on? That's better? Okay, thank you. All right, well, good evening. And I appreciate everybody's participation today. I know the Monday after the Fourth of July week, when everybody was off, is always interesting, right? So I am Jody Tross from Community Insurance. We are your liability insurance carrier. We insure 52 of the counties in the state, about 130 school districts, and over 100 municipalities, about 50% of the student population in Wisconsin. So we are a carrier in which you own your own insurance company. It was formed in the 1980s when counties were having difficulty getting liability insurance and were seriously considering closing parks. So the counties formed together and said, "We need to have this type of coverage. We can't continue without it." And so that's when it started, 25 years ago. And then they started adding the schools in the mid to late 1990s. And now we have 50% of the student population. So it's kind of an unusual insurance company. To own your own company, we cover everything. So it's very rare that we have an exclusion. There's only a couple. I think you can't fly a plane or certain yachts over 32 feet or something like that. So it's an unusual insurance policy. So it's kind of unique that way. We add coverage such as cyber coverage in the middle of a policy period at no charge and things like that. So we are followed by a board of directors that are all public elected officials. So it's pretty unique. So whenever you have a question or you wonder if we do something or if we cover something, never hesitate to ask. So more often than not, I will say, "Yes, we will cover that." I'm not sure it's a good risk management choice, but we will cover it. So never hesitate to ask us. That's what we're there for. So just like that with this presentation, if you have any questions as I go along. I've been doing this presentation for 20 years now. So I was just telling that my very first week, 20 years ago, I did sexual harassment training for a county board. So it's been doing this for a very long time. We do this one all the time. And we really appreciate the fact that you not only train the staff, but also that we go to the level of the board as well. So thank you. So this presentation includes three different topics. It's called the Trio of Harassment. The first one is sexual harassment. And quite frankly, we pulled that one out individually because we still get so many complaints of harassment, which really follows what the media's happened right in the last year, but we've been doing this for 20 years. So diversity and sensitivity. It is all about respect, which covers the other protected classes by federal and state law. And the third one that we've added in that is not covered by federal or state law, but is in your policy as well, is workplace bullying. Because that has become such a huge issue, we started including that about seven or eight years ago. So our goal is to talk about what your rights and responsibilities are, define exactly what those, each of those items are. I'm going to give you examples this evening. Unfortunately, I have many in 20 years. So that's not always good, but they are quite entertaining and specific to the areas that I'm talking about too. So we will try to shorten that up as we go along. That's some part that I can cut out as well to keep us down to the 5:30. We'll talk a little bit about your policies, which were all updated as of May of 2017. So that's excellent. As a liability insurance carrier, we're always looking for those to be continually looked at and updated as we go along. And answer any questions as we go along. I don't have to go in a particular order. Please do not hesitate to ask questions. So, all right. So we'll start with stopping sexual harassment, the hot topic of the day. We do talk about supervisor responsibilities versus employee responsibilities. It is truly a supervisor, administrators, a school board member's responsibility if they see some type of harassment occurring, that they stop it immediately. We want you to take immediate action. So when you see something or hear something, whether it's at a football game, a soccer game, at a coffee shop, at the fireworks on Wednesday night, wherever it is, you have to take that complaint seriously. It does not have to be formal or in writing or at the school district. It can be in a coffee shop or somewhere else. It could be over a back fence of your backyard. The complaint can come from anywhere. We want you to assist any employee with a complaint. Quite frankly, that's kind of my line that I've added over the years because what I've had is sometimes where someone goes, "Oh, but they complain about everything." We get complaints from them weekly. When it comes to harassment, discrimination, or bullying, we have to follow up immediately. Please don't ignore it. Doesn't mean there's not merit to it. And retaliation cannot occur. So when we have some type of harassment or discrimination complaint that goes through the civil rights and the court system, it can take literally years, many years. And so there cannot be retaliation against that person for putting the complaint during any of that part of that time at all. We'll talk a little bit more about that as well. Employees also have responsibilities. They're supposed to refrain from the conduct, which is forbidden. It's certainly been in the media a lot lately, so they're even more aware of what that might mean. We wish for them to report any acts of harassment as well and really encourage other people to report. So, and to cooperate in an investigation, which is really key for our Human Resources Department as well. Sexual harassment can occur toward and between any of the following. Coworker to coworker, coworker to board member, board member to the public, or the parents, or our volunteers, our student population. Our students can sexually harass our staff members and vice versa. Independent contracted service workers means the person that's delivering the UPS packages all the way to the person who's working on your plumbing or some other type of repair work that's working in the district or when we're doing renovations. Applicants for employment. We have had harassment complaints about people who are applying for the job during the interview process or why they weren't chosen. And the key ones was sexual harassment that came out in 1998 from three Supreme Court decisions, which are now 20 years old, so they're not very new anymore. But that is the same gender and third-party sexual harassment. So before 20 years ago, we did not have female-to-female sexual harassment or male-to-male. We also didn't have third party. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. So it really changed how we look at sexual harassment. Oops, I went right by it. The Equal Employment Opportunity Commission defines sexual harassment as unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, and other verbal or physical conduct of a sexual nature. It is broken down into three subcategories. I'm not going to read them to you. It's in your policy. It's the same ones that have been there forever. Okay? And you'll all have this presentation as we go along as well. There are two main types of sexual harassment. There is quid quo pro, which is a Latin term. We don't use too many Latin terms for general things like this anymore. But a Latin term meaning this for that. We also call it today a tangible job action. And that's an employment action based on the acceptance or rejection of unwelcome sexual behavior. Typically, this is when a supervisor, a principal, an administrator, or someone else in authority offers or withholds work-related benefits in exchange for sexually related favors. This is not anything new. It just has kind of a little bit of a new name to tangible job action. Why did I click in a little too? It almost clicks twice for me. So when we talk about tangible job action, it does have to have a tangible job benefit, something as we choose not to hire them or not promote them. Maybe we change their job task so that they have the most menial task or the worst task there is if they have refused sexual advances from a supervisor or manager. Who is that supervisor or manager? It can be a direct line of supervision, but it could also be someone else who might have some type of authority over that position or job, or maybe some type of promotion. So it does not have to be totally a direct line supervisor. It can be someone from a different building or administrator or school board as well. Then the other one that came about 20 years ago is hostile work environment. And hostile work environment is unwelcome sexual behavior that creates an offensive, hostile, or intimidating workplace that negatively affects a person's ability to do their work. What does that mean? It actually really opens it up completely. It does not have to be a tangible employment action. We can have same gender. We can have third party. It's anything that unreasonably interferes with a person's ability to do their work performance and creates an intimidating, hostile, offensive work environment. So it can be simple as, so every board meeting, you meet a couple times a month, correct? And when you come in, and this is obviously just an example, Ed and Laura come and they're always one of the first ones here. And so they sit down and they haven't seen each other. It was over the Fourth of July weekend. And they tell each other a few dirty jokes that they heard over the week. And they're always here nice on time. And Andrew, do you go by Andrew?
Yeah.
Comes in and he wants to be here on time as well. And he's sitting next to them and he has to listen to them telling their repertoire back and forth. Now between Ed and Laura, it is not sexual harassment hostile work environment because it is equal initiation and participation. They're both telling jokes back and forth. But for Andrew, that can be third-party sexual harassment. And it's something that occurs multiple times. We meet a couple times a month. Sometimes the severity gets a little bit worse. But that can be a third-party sexual harassment. And I'll be very honest, we get a lot of those complaints. And a lot of times it's when it's same gender. So if it's a bunch of women in the room or in the break room or something like that or the men, and they think, "Well, it's all the same gender. It doesn't matter." We get a lot of same-gender harassment complaints. We talk about hostile environment. Typically, it gets worse over time. And what's really important is the perception. The perception takes precedence over intention. What's really important too is that the employee did not solicit or invite the conduct. It's not as if Andrew has participated in the past in some of these jokes and all of a sudden he's kind of changing his mind. You can't have participated for a long time and then just change your mind real easily. That doesn't work that way. But it is something that it's got to be unwelcome. Some signs of unwelcome conduct. You know, if a complaint is made, that's the obvious one, right? Someone's certainly letting you know about that. If they let you know that the joke or comment wasn't appreciated, they've asked you not to make those comment or jokes again, or innuendos. They sigh. They put their head down. They walk away. They don't laugh. You got to watch people's body language. I really talk a lot with staff that are the funny one because there's always someone that's a funny one. And they are, they're hilarious or a joy to work with. But it can be clean. You can still be funny and it can still be clean. So when we talk about, oh, I went way too far. Sorry. When we talk about different types of sexual harassment, I break it down between verbal, nonverbal, and physical. Verbal sexual harassment is obviously the speaking to someone. This is a really large one, quite frankly. I've had three complaints by one of those words up there. Anybody guess which word I've had the three sexual harassment complaints about? Sweetie, dear, hunk, doll, babe, honey, my girls, my boys? What do you think it is? It's actually dear. So dear is actually one of the biggest complaints that I get. Another one that we get more often than not is my boys or my girls. I was actually at an administrative meeting about a month ago and I had a female department head say my boys as she was talking about her staff. And I had just got done with the training. So I mean, she probably does it a lot, right? So saying that can be very demeaning as well. But you have to watch comments like that. If you're someone who's not good at remembering names, that's something to really work on, to use people's first name as much as possible. Turning to work discussion, unwanted sexual topics or stories, unwanted asking about sexual fantasies or dreams, unwanted teasing, jokes, or remarks, unwanted sexual comments about clothing, body, or looks. Can you still give a compliment today? Absolutely. How we do it does matter. Absolutely matters. So if I choose, you kind of have a blue shirt. What is your first name?
Babe.
Babe Ruth. John. So if I come up to John this evening and say, "Good evening, John. You look really nice today. I like that blue shirt with your eyes." Or if I come up to him and say, "Good evening, John. You look really nice today. I like that blue shirt with your eyes." Did I say the same words? I did.
I apologize. I did not mean to make light of the topic. It's extremely serious and...
Oh, that's okay.
I did not intend to.
I often have people give me a different name, so that I'm used to that. So, "My name is Jody." And I had a male recently say, "My name is Jody." And I said, "Yeah, right." And they said, "No, really. His name is Jody." I said, "I haven't met one since I'm seven." That's male. That's older than me, so. But the point is that you can give someone a compliment about their looks, they get a new hairstyle and outfit, that type of thing. It just has to be appropriate. And I should not be giving John compliments about his clothing or body on a daily basis or regular basis. It should be serious. How we do that is really important. And frankly, we get a lot of complaints in this area. I had an HR director who, the school district was doing a phenomenal job on their wellness program. And a woman had come in and she had lost about 30 pounds. And she walked in and he said, "Wow, you look great. I think we should have a district calendar next year." Was she offended? She was not. Remember, we have third-party sexual harassment. Someone else who overheard the comment was offended. So things like that, it has to be appropriate as well. Sexually suggestive sounds or gestures. These are just ones that I put up there because of the ones I've had the complaints on. But kissing sounds, whistling, howling. I recently had a school district who was hiring and the female staff were scoring the men as they came through for the interviews with numbers. Not appropriate. And repeatedly asking on a person on a date. So obviously, people meet at work and spend a lot of time at work. But if you keep asking someone else, I always ask the staff, "If you ask someone and they say no, do you ask again?" And they're like, "No." I'm like, "Yeah, you do." They ask two or three times, right? But after that, you got to pay attention. Oops, I keep going a little too fast. Nonverbal, you don't have to speak to someone or touch them and we can have a sexual harassment complaint. The elevator eyes, looking them up and down. This can be a big complaint that I've seen in the past, quite frankly, of staff to students is a real big complaint that we sometimes get in as well. Giving inappropriate personal gifts. So when you have a retirement or a birthday party at work, if it's going to be inappropriate gifts like the shape of a cake or something else, or personal items, or lingerie, then you take it off-site and do it after hours at a different location. So people have a choice to be there or not. Email messages, text messages is another one. I had a female teacher, it was a Friday afternoon, and she was sending her boyfriend an email on what she would like to do with him that weekend sexually. Only his first name was the same as the first name of a whole other building, elementary building. And so she sent the email to a whole other staff of another building. So, once you've sent it, can you return? Go ahead.
Just because you had mentioned earlier that the offense does not have to happen on district property. And if they take this party off-site, can somebody still...
Oh, so what I mentioned earlier, I apologize, is that if someone makes a complaint to you as a board member or anyone in administration or supervisory, if that's off-site, then you got to follow through with that. If it's off-site and it's work-related, then yes, as far as like a conference or something like that. But not if we would take the party off-site. Very good question. Thank you. That's a really good distinction. So breaching a person's physical space, getting too close. Typically, in a school district, this becomes an issue sometimes, and I don't know what your staff policy is, but can a staff member hug a student? I would assume. Can they hug an elementary student?
They do.
They do, sure. But we just do it appropriately, right? So we do it out in the open. We do it, you know, you teach people to turn to the side. It shouldn't be all the time. It shouldn't be behind closed doors. That's why I like the visibility of the window so we can see in the classroom and that type of thing as well. But I had, I was doing a school district not long ago and I had a male custodian who said, "I always pat the boys on the butt." He worked in the elevator. And I said, "No, no, no. That's a personal property. You cannot do that." But he'd been doing it for years. So if a complaint came in. So you just want to make sure that we talk about that as well. Physical sexual harassment, unwanted rubbing or massaging a person's back, neck, shoulders, or arms, hugging, touching, cornering, or pinching, hugging or kissing. Sometimes we have a tendency to say, "Oh, well, she goes up to everybody and gives them a hug and a peck on the cheek." It doesn't mean that it's appropriate at work. Padding, grabbing, cresting, or fondling, and exposing yourself. And quite frankly, I have more exposing yourself harassment examples than I can name tonight. But I had a male employee in a school mooning other male employees, which is exposing yourself. Was actually reprimanded and then terminated because he didn't stop. I had, probably one of my most serious examples was I had done an entire district's training. And afterwards, I had a female bus driver come up to me and say, "I'm so glad you were here today." I said, "Why is that?" And she said, "Well, last year, you see, my bus route was the first. I was the first one to arrive at the shop to get the bus." And there'd be two employees, other bus drivers, having sex. I said, "Oh." She said, "That's third-party sexual harassment, right?" I said, "That would be third-party sexual harassment, yes." And she had went to the female transportation director and complained. And the female transportation director, this is a true story, said to her, "It is none of your business. I have given them permission. They're having marital problems. And no, they're not married to one another. And it's none of your business." So what the transportation director did was altered her work hours so she was no longer the first one in the bus shop, which is what? Retaliation. So had retaliated against her and she lost all these hours of pay the last year. She just wanted it to stop, was her goal. But, so obviously, the concern there was the transportation director as well being notified. So anytime someone in management, administration, or supervisory personnel is notified, they have to address the situation and investigation should have been done.
I think you heard it all.
Yeah. Well, the superintendent of that district, I ran into him about a month later and I said, "How are we doing with our bus situation?" He said, "Oh, we're doing great. Those two bus drivers are no longer with us." Who is I concerned about? Transportation director.
You are.
Yeah. So he said, "Well, she's retiring at the end of the year." Not really soon enough. So exposing yourself unfortunately continues to be, I have many cases on that. It is a fact that sexual harassment is generally about power, not sex. You've seen that in the media a lot. It's people in positions of power and they use that. We've had the same things in the schools as well, whether it's a building administrator, whether it's a custodial supervisor as well. It is also a fact that men and women see sexual harassment differently. We always recommend that if it is a sexual harassment complaint, that we have a male and a female doing the investigation because it's just a fact of nature. And it is very true that training discourages harassing behavior. So the more we talk about it, the more chance that we can prevent it in the future. Some mistakes. It's not a problem. We have no complaints. That is a mistake because you never want to be that school district that has that surprise. So you keep doing the training like you have been. Your policies are updated, which is excellent. Seriously, that means a lot. So keep doing that as well. Harassment's caused by a person's clothing. I'm sure your district is no different than the rest when we look at different clothing trends throughout the years and appropriate attire for staff or for students. It's a constant challenge as that changes. And just make sure you keep up on that and that you're as consistent as possible. It has nothing to do with the size of the person or how they're built, but you're consistent with those rules and have staff address it. Whether it's staff addressing it with students or administrators addressing it with staff as well. But that is, and make sure you're just as consistent as possible as you can do with that. Sexual harassment is a women's problem? Absolutely not. Men are sexually harassed as well. They just don't complain as much. We don't get the formal complaints, but it certainly happens. And the harassment will just go away. Typically, we, especially when we talk about a hostile work environment, the harassment doesn't just go away. It usually gets worse. How do we stop harassment? We encourage people to talk to the harasser as much as possible. Hopefully, John would come up to me and he would be really serious and have direct eye contact, not be joking around, and ask me to stop making the comments about his clothing. I may say something like, "What, are you having a bad day?" And hopefully, he'd say, "It has nothing to do with that. Your behavior needs to stop." About 50% of the time, that does work. Because most of the time, I just think I was being cute or funny, or maybe I thought he was attractive. So my intentions don't really matter, do they? What matters is his perception. But if he's direct with me, a lot of times that does work. So is everybody comfortable in doing that? Absolutely not. And that's what we have the policy in place for as well, and they can go forward with Sorry, I'm still picking on you, John. Some signs of sexual harassment or any type of discrimination or bullying. These are general for all of them, but one of the ones that concerns me the most, we work with only public entities in Wisconsin, and I've been with this for 20 years, I have never, ever seen the turnover rates that we're seeing today. It is more difficult than ever and we never want to lose someone because of harassment or bullying. We've trained them. We've worked with them. We don't want them going off to another district because of those situations. We want to make sure that we're addressing this as we go along. But we want to decrease those turnover rates. Changes in appearance, how someone sleeps, if they're having trouble with headaches or stomach aches is a very large one as well. A lot of GI problems, a lot of emotional distress. It could be some type of harassment. Same thing with students, right? You've seen it with students. So a student who has difficulty, my husband was a fifth grade teacher at the time, and he had a student who was going down to the office every couple weeks for a stomach ache. And he said, "I have to figure this out." So he started marking on his day planner. Well, it turned out it was the day she had a math test. So it wasn't every Wednesday or every other Wednesday, so it wasn't obvious, but she had math anxiety. So they could just quickly affect that. Bless you. So you want to really try to look at any type of harassment or discrimination. The reasonable person standard is, in a sexual harassment case where the behavior in question is in question or subtle and falls into the gray area, what does the court system use? The court system uses the reasonable person standard. And that standard would ask, would a reasonable person interpret this behavior to be sexual harassment? And there are some that can be in a gray area. We hope to prevent those and to investigate those and to get past those so they never get into the court system. We do assist with that as well. We have what's called pre-claim loss control, which is very unique in the liability market. But we look at it in any type of difficult termination or something like that. Or we've helped you with other types of discrimination in the past, whether it's ADA or civil rights as well. But we do what's pre-claim loss control, and this is very unique. Typically, an insurance company requires you to have a claim submitted before they will assist you with that claim. We will help with pre-claim loss control. We will pay for the attorney, as long as it's one of our approved attorneys on our list that do a lot of work for this, and pay for that upfront. So that is a cost that the district does not incur. So it's kind of unique. Traps and landmines.
Jody, what does that entail? I mean, describe that a little bit more.
So instead of waiting until a claim actually comes in and the person has a ton of documentation and is so angry and upset that they've already gotten their own attorney, we try to help you prevent it and work through it so we do it correctly. Sometimes it can be a sexual harassment complaint. Sometimes it can be a gender discrimination or ADA. But we will help pay for that in the attorney fees upfront before that formal complaint is ever, is all forgiven. Our goal is to prevent...
Have we taken advantage of that at all? Is it?
I think we, we have on a few occasions, especially when we have cases more on the student's side, where we believe that they're going to be headed towards a due process. We've gotten community involved and gotten special ed council assigned so that they can work with Claudia in the pre-due process steps to.
Successfully?
Yes. Yep.
We've had it for transgender cases as well. Sometimes it's an employment action, a really difficult termination, or a sexual abuse claim or something like that as well.
Not here in Green Bay, but that's what they've done.
Yes, in other districts.
In other districts.
Okay, all right.
That was not Green Bay, sorry.
Okay.
Traps and landmines, it's really important to not overreact. When you get a complaint, that we follow your policy. If you've ever had someone come up to you and tell you their harassment story, it's difficult to hear the first time, and you have a tendency to go, "Oh, my goodness, that happened here. I can't believe that. We'll take care of that. We'll rectify that." We have to do an investigation first, and we have to follow the policy. And your policy is very well-written. It states that the person is, the investigation goes through the human resources department. If there's a problem with the human resources problem, then it goes to superintendent's office, and it can even come to the board of education as well. So it is important that everybody knows what that policy is and you follow the policy. I really recommend that all administrators, building administrators, anyone in a supervisory role, we read this policy on an annual basis. Because it's not something we have to have the complaint very often. But if it does come to you, you should know what the policy says and what your procedures are so you're not taken off guard. Because it's very difficult to hear a harassment complaint. Taking everyone serious is really important as well, and properly training staff. So we recommend that training is done formally every three to five years. We also have an online program that it can be done as well. And then it has a quiz at the end, much like a Safe Schools type thing. We have our own online program as well. These are just some dangerous words. If you hear people saying them, we hope we stop and talk to them about it. It's just teasing, really, it's no big deal. You're way too sensitive. Just ignore it. Why can't you learn to accept a compliment? It's just a joke. Lighten up. If we're saying those words, those are kind of key words that we want to ditch and take a look at what's happening if we're thinking that way. When a harassment complaint is made, confidentiality, you've talked about that in your policy, is extremely important, that we don't spread out rumors and that type of thing. I had a situation in one school district in which I had a middle-school student who had masturbated in a special ed classroom in a dark corner on a computer. And that female staff member went throughout the whole community, including her daughter and her friends, who were the same age, and said that he was unsafe and that they should stay away from this young man. So things like that, that's a breach of confidentiality and very scary as well because it really wasn't sexual harassment. So when we look at that, confidentiality is incredibly important. Remind people of that.
Right, right. How, how was that not sexual harassment? I'm assuming people see the, at least some people saw the results.
Right. So if we would have a middle-school student who would be masturbating in front of a teacher on a regular basis, then that would be a concern. But this was a dark corner where she'd put him on a computer, and definitely something we wanted to address, but that wasn't done to her. So it would not be sexual harassment.
And no one, no one else saw it?
No. That's a good point. No, nobody else was in the classroom. He was alone with her.
Okay. And the results of the, were not visible to others that came through later or anything?
No, not at all.
All right, I understand.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you. So I always want to make sure to follow the policy. That's why I put it in bold, capital letters. The policy, you know, you have it, and so it's really important from a liability carrier's perspective and the courts that we follow that as well. I'm sure Melissa would agree, right? That we make sure we follow that too. So always protect against any type of retaliation and document. Too often, I hear from an administrator that they sit down with the person, but they don't document anything. They don't take any notes. And so we need you to document as much as possible. We think we're going to remember everything, but we don't. So please take notes when the first complaint comes in. I'm just having fun with your flickers. Corrective actions can be up to and including termination, which we've seen for harassment. The investigation is probably one of the most important factors, what I've seen from harassment in school districts, especially when you're coming from a large district, and it could be someone who goes to multiple buildings throughout a day or through a week as well that we really do a thorough investigation. Prevention is our first and best remedy. Hopefully, this is part of your new employee orientation program as you bring in staff for the beginning of the year. I know they're not really thinking about sexual harassment or abuse much, but doing that training at the beginning when they first report is really important. And then at least every three to five years. And for administrative staff, as you have a complaint or a situation happening, I hope that it becomes part of that administrative meeting once a month too, if there's something serious or we see a trend going on as well. Reporting, you allow verbally and in writing. You prefer in writing as well. It does talk specifically about a number of days in your policy. So if someone is not happy with the result of the decision, it gives them so many days to respond. I think it's five business days, am I correct? And then the board of education has 30 days. So you do have some constraints there. So it's really important when we look at that, especially around the summertime, and people might be gone, that we have enough time to do that investigation and decision too. We talked a little bit about retaliation. We don't want to allow any type of retaliation or ostracize a person or change their job hours or their pay or limit them either way. Always remember that the perceptions of others are more important than your intentions. And that is a key part when we talk about any type of harassment or discrimination. I like to say, if you wouldn't say it in front of your mom, your spouse, or your kids, don't say it at work. My grandma's 99 and a half this year. I have used her my whole life. It works really well for me. I'm pretty sure she's not the prude I make her out to be, but it works that I don't say it at work and I'm in a lot of different places. So it's just kind of one of those reminders. And if you ever catch someone saying, "I know I probably shouldn't say this, but..." That is correct. That was your gut instinct and you probably shouldn't say it. All right, any questions on the sexual harassment specifically? All right. Diversity and sensitivity training, it's all about respect. This is covered in the other protected classes by federal and state law. So there are people, our most valuable resource, and our whole goal is to capitalize on their uniqueness and their differences to build a stronger, a more capable workplace. And if they feel valuable and worthwhile, they're much more willing to be greater productivity and happy. So I love this poem because we all have personal biases. And the poem is called "The Cold Within." As far as I know, the author is unknown. Six humans trapped by happenstance in bleak and bitter cold. Each one possessed a stick of wood, or so the story is told. Their dying fire in need of logs, the first woman held hers back. For of the faces around the fire, she noticed one was black. The next man looking across the way saw one knot of his church and couldn't bring himself to give the fire his stick of birch. The third one sat in tattered clothes, he gave his coat a hitch. Why should his log be put to use to warm the idle rich? The rich man just sat back and thought of the wealth he had in store and how to keep what he had earned from the lazy, shiftless poor. The black man's face bespoke the revenge as a fire passed from sight. For all he saw in his stick of wood was a chance to spite the white. And the last man of this forlorn group did not accept for gain. Giving only to those who give was how he played the game. The logs held tight and destil hands were proof of human sin. They did not die from the cold without, they died from the cold within. The poem addresses several different stereotypes and biases that people might have, and we'll talk a little bit about how that's so important to identify them as we go along. Diversity has one of the most simplest definitions there is. It's how we, where each of us is unique, just like two, no two snowflakes are alike, no two people are alike either. And remaining open-minded is really a key to that. So our whole goal is to have people working together and teaching in a respectful environment. These are the protected classes by federal and state law. There is many of them. There hasn't been a lot of new ones. The latest one I saw was the honesty test for lie detector from Wisconsin, which is interesting. So law enforcement can still use it occasionally in the right situations. But people are starting to use them for hiring purposes. So they have put that up there as well. We talk about race, we'll talk about that in a little bit, color, religion, gender. Gender discrimination is something that I've had complaints on in the schools, where I have a staff member, a teacher, who pretty much treats the boys different than the girls. I've seen it myself. And often, what bothers me is everybody knows exactly who I'm talking about it if I bring it up in a school district. So that's the concern. So if we know we have an issue like that, we have to address it. So I had a kindergarten teacher that every little girl who walked in that classroom got a big smile and hello and how you doing every morning, and the boys got a curt nod. That's how they started their day at five and six years old. That's a problem. So we look at gender discrimination, it's something to talk about too when we do staff training as well. Gender identity and sexual orientation, we'll talk a little bit more about transgender as well. I know that you have a transgender policy and are dealing with that too. That is probably one of the hottest topics in the state. We've had several cases in other districts. We had been really successful with the preclaim loss control in one of the districts in the Fox Valley that did an excellent policy and the family was willing to go with it. We've had another one that totally went south. So, and that was in Kenosha. So this is hot topics, and making sure that we're following is really important and working with that family. So if we have, with transgender, one of the biggest concerns I have found when I do the training is that religion, people's religious beliefs really can hold them back in how they look at this or how they address this. So this is really important to discuss, really have some open conversations about it. Do some great training on this area, because it's a big concern. Many children, by doing research, often identify with the opposite gender at a very young age. We're talking toddler. So it's very young. So it's not something that it's going to be puberty or later. It's going to start all the way through elementary and up. National origin, age discrimination, I think 40 is really young. I don't know how that can be old, but it all is relative. We also see a reverse age discrimination, treating those people who are first coming into the buildings or the younger staff as if their ideas have no merit yet. You haven't been here long enough. You haven't done this long enough. They can have some great ideas too. It's a reverse age discrimination. It is not protected by federal or state law, but it's there. Disability, we talked a lot about ADA as well. That also includes mental health under Wisconsin too. So that's a key too. Genetic information, creed, citizenship, marital status, and you can keep right on going. Political affiliation as well. So those are the ones that are protected by federal and state law. We can have physical or mental abuse when we talk about harassment and discrimination based on one of those areas that are protected. This is a poster that I like to use. This was made by the American Red Cross. It was only taken out of our public swimming pools just a few years ago. So I don't know if you can see it very well, but when you take a look at the poster, what do you see?
The cool kids are white, yeah. All the black kids are not cool.
That is correct. So if you look at the cool behavior, I don't know if I have a pointer. There is, I don't think I do. So there is two. The young blond-haired girl on the left by the diving board has cool behavior. She's waiting very patiently for her turn on the diving board. And the other cool behavior is over to the right. It is a white dad and his son playing in the pool really nice. He's supervising his son and playing with him. Now, if you look at the not cool behavior, we have a young black boy who's diving off the diving board headfirst into the water. We have a black girl over on the side of the swimming pool pushing a white girl into the pool. We have a couple of kids running. We have a young man in the middle. I'm not sure what he's doing wrong. It says not cool behavior. He's yelling. I think he's drowning. I don't know. So it's kind of interesting, but this was only taken out a couple of years ago. So the person who designed this poster, do you think they were biased? It appears that way, right? We really don't know.
It's my perception.
It's my perception as well. I wonder if they knew it, or if they designed the poster and were even aware that they had a racial bias.
Did they ever find the person and ask? I'm just wondering, because it's like, it quickly became a classic viral example.
It did. That I don't know. I'm not sure I would admit it if I was the one who drew it. Now, I had another young lady, she'd grown up in the Minneapolis area. She was a social worker. And she said to me, "This is interesting, because I didn't notice color at all." She'd grown up in a neighborhood that had many different shades of color and different ethnicities. She's noticed boys versus girls. So to her, more the girls were more behaving than the boys were more naughty. So it's kind of interesting how, and how we look at it. But that is truly the whole point when we talk about diversity and sensitivity. Every single one of us has stereotypes and biases that negatively affect how we treat other people. And you have to identify those to ever address them, and we all have them. We wish we didn't, but we do. And it's really important in this school district. This is my favorite video. Don't laugh at me, was originally done by Peter, Paul, and Mary. Has anybody ever seen this? This one is done by Mark Willis. I am running quite late, so I'm not going to have, show it right now. But please go back, I'll send you this, and take a look at this link. It is a phenomenal video. My husband shows it in his classroom every year. It addresses a lot of different issues when we look at it as well. One of my favorite portions is the folks who are homeless in the video, and how one of the men had his, a car crossed the center line and killed his wife and his young boy, and that's why he's homeless today. And I work with someone who had his wife and daughter get killed on Highway 10 when someone crossed the center line. And he's not homeless, but he could be. That could have been him. And we were talking about the DECA conferences earlier. My oldest son was in Nashville for the National DECA Conference. And they had free time every night from 9:30 to midnight in downtown Nashville, which is a whole nother risk-management issue. But they had free time with no chaperones. And so they'd be walking the streets, because if you saw my son, he still looks like he's 15 and he's 20. So they weren't going to the bars. But there was a lot of people who were homeless. And one of his friends, when they would ask for something, would say, "What is it that you want?" And they would typically ask for money. And his friend Christian would say, "I'm sorry, you know, I can't help you." And one of the men, one of the nights, said, "I love a cheeseburger." And Christian said, "I'll buy you a cheeseburger." He said, "Really?" He said, "Yeah, there's a Hard Rock Cafe right down the road. Let's go." So this homeless person, Bob, started walking with them. Another homeless person said, "Hey, Bob, where are you going?" And he said, "I'm going to get a cheeseburger." And Christian turned to him and said, "Would you like to join him?" And he did. His name was Fred. And they went and got a burger and ribs and a coke. And that shows empathy. By a young man who works at Walgreens, he couldn't afford to go to college. He went to our tech. That was his college the first year. So someone, it just shows empathy. He wants to run for president someday, so I'm hoping that the empathy stays right there as he does that. But when you look at that, my son, the reason he's telling me this story in the first place is the fact that the men didn't order alcohol. Because he assumed if they were homeless and wishing for something, it would be alcohol or drugs. That's what the money would be for. So that was a whole nother education, but his body was doing really well. But watch this video, it is phenomenal. Don't laugh at me. Show it during an administrative meeting. It's really worth it. Mistakes, if you make a mistake, it's so important that we apologize. We will all make mistakes for a million different reasons and not even realize it. And if someone pulls you aside and lets you know, we want to make sure that we apologize for that. I love this saying. This was painted on my son's wall in elementary school. And the reason I know that is I started saying this saying at dinner one night, and my son repeated the end of it in fourth grade. So it was a great discussion for dinner. But it is true, to watch our thoughts for they become our words. Watch our words for they do become our actions. And watch our actions for they become our habits. And watch your habits for they become your character. And we must watch our character for it becomes our destiny, what we think we become. And that's why those implicit biases that we're not being aware of really are a factor. Because they affect how we handle things. This was by an administrator that told me this story. She had a huge bias against tattoos. She hated tattoos. She didn't understand tattoos. She didn't know why anybody would put something so permanently on her, on their body. And so that's a factor when you're an administrator, is it not? You're hiring, you're talking to people, and if a tattoo is visible, that could be an issue. Until one day, her and her husband had taken in a lot of different foster children. And a young lady ran up to her and said, she had turned 18, and she said, "I got a new tattoo." And Marge looked at her and thought, "Oh, I have to fake that I like this tattoo." But this one, she really liked. It said, "Always on my mind, forever in my heart." And it was her husband's birthday and the day he died. So that changed her mind about tattoos. She realized it must be something really important to put it so permanently on your body. But that was one of her biases that she worked with for much of her career until that story happened. So we have to address those implicit biases. Tolerance is a very simple definition as well. It's not persecuting those who look, believe, behave, or act in ways that we may not personally approve of. I think that's really important for staff as well. Those are the protected classes. That could be a whole day of presentation, I'm sure, right? If we broke them all down, but the generalization as we go through. What happened when I would do this trainings? We would do an hour of sexual harassment, and we would do an hour of diversity and sensitivity. It's all about respect. It never failed that I would have people come up to me afterwards and go, "But I have this problem, but it has nothing to do with my age or my religion. It has to do with bullying and harassment." So we began incorporating workplace bullying. It is not a state or federal law. It is in some other states at this time, might be a healthy workplace. It's been in Wisconsin legislature a couple of times, but never went very far. You do have it as part of your policy. So again, a nice pat on the back for including this so that you can address this when it becomes an issue with staff or a parent or someone else. Workplace bullying, in this presentation is titled, "There is Power in One Voice, Because Each Person Can Make a Difference." Bullying does not stop from the playground or when someone graduates high school. Bullying does not stop from the playground or when someone graduates high school. Bullying continues into the workforce, and even more importantly, it continues into our senior centers. We work with many counties. We work with nursing homes. We work nutritional sites. This is a huge issue. Senior bullying is a major problem as well. So it doesn't end. So I put the cartoon in there, you know, give me your donut roll and plug your electric blanket, but it is really a major problem. So bullying doesn't end. Bullying is intentional, and I think that's really important to always note. It's not just a perception thing. It's totally intentional. It's repetitive aggressive behavior that often will involve an imbalance of power or strength. It is a silent epidemic without a doubt. Um, it is repeated. It's conscious, and cyberbullying is included with that as well. But it is, they're really seriously relating PTSD with this. When people are bullied, we've seen suicides. This is very serious when we talk about bullying as well. I think this is important to know. A factor that increases risk for bullying behavior in the workplace is significant organizational change. Our public entities in Wisconsin have had more significant change than ever before. So this is kind of a ripe environment for this as well. When we look at the bully, the bully doesn't have to be male. The bully doesn't have to be bigger or older. Bullies come in all packages. Do women bully? Quite well. Mobbing is one of my greatest concerns when I've seen this. I've seen it at several public entities, where everybody's picking on one person. And eventually, what happens? The person in the red in the middle does what? They quit. They leave, or they're terminated. And then what happens? Someone else has to be chosen to be bullied. So it's really important, and this happens in the workplace, just like it does in a classroom. How it affects people, one of the greatest things that I have seen, quite frankly, is GI problems, digestive disturbances. I had an employee who, as soon as she crossed a particular street on the way into work, her stomach started to hurt, and her stomach would stop hurting when she left and crossed that street again. She hadn't worked there in two years, but if she still crosses that street, it will start to hurt. People go for tons of GI tests. They think something's wrong, and it turns out it's nothing. It is, it's not, it's not that it's nothing. It's nothing physical as far as a GI problem. It is stress. So, and then they take it home as well. But bullying affects people greatly. A bully is a type A personality. They're competitive. Other people might walk on eggshells around the bully. I had a superintendent in a school district where the school district had set up a doorbell system. They only worked a couple of days a week, and it wasn't consistent. So it didn't have to be Tuesday and Thursday. It was a small district. It could be Monday or Wednesday. So they never knew when he was coming in. And so they set up a doorbell system. So the receptionist, as soon as he pulled into the parking lot, would hit the doorbell, and it meant what? Get out. Anyone who could get out of the building did. It was a warning, because they walked on eggshells. They were so scared around that person. So we should never be worried about waking the sleeping giant. We should never be screamed or yelled at. The bully craves power and control, and about 50% of the time, it can also be the supervisor or the administrator, because it's about power sometimes. The victim is kind of interesting, because on the playground, sometimes the victim is someone who's weaker or newer, or not as strong, or willing to stand out for themselves. That is not in the workplace. The workplace victim is usually the most experienced, most popular, most respected person. Because if the bully craves power, it's more beneficial to me if I'm craving power to take out that most experienced person, because then it gives me more power. Doesn't help me a lot in the workplace to take out the weak fish. So bullying in the workplace is very different. Number one complaint by staff that I receive is stealing their ideas and not giving them credit. "Oh, I had this great idea," says a supervisor or administrator, "and it really came from their staff members, and they don't get the credit." Number one complaint.
That's unacceptable, but that's, that's an actual bullying as opposed to, I guess, something different, but still inappropriate?
It can be a bullying tactic, absolutely.
If it were probably more than once, then?
Yeah, this is not a one-time incident. Bullying is repetitive. Definitely repetitive.
I think the, I think people, maybe not around this table, but the, in general, go to that word too quickly when there's other behaviors that are certainly not okay, but it hasn't hit the pattern status of, of bullying.
Right. It could be a different management style. It could be that they're trying to hold the employee to a certain requirements or job tasks, absolutely. So typically, by the time I've been brought in, when someone thinks, "Oh, it's a management style or administrative style," typically it's gotten so bad by that time that we have multiple complaints, formal complaints often. So to be careful, you're right, that we don't want to just term anything bully, for sure. Um, when a bully finds a target that refuses to be controlled or intimidated in the workplace, typically they escalate their behavior. We try to teach staff to have responses. It's kind of like a first aid training. You have to have a response. So if someone is demeaning to you, or screaming or yelling at you, or is derogatory, um, you have to have a response for them. And one of my favorite responses is "really", because you can bring it back to them. Typically, what people do when they're being bullied or demeaned is we come up and defend ourselves. We're stammering. We can't think of anything to say. We can't believe it's happening. We walk away, and 10 minutes later, we're going, "Oh, why didn't I say this?" Or "Why didn't I do that?" And so you have to be ready for that and think about that ahead of time. It's kind of like a first aid training. If someone is screaming and yelling at you, it is okay to walk away and say, "I would be happy to talk to you later," whether it's a parent or something like that as well. Do we have parents who bully staff? Absolutely. Okay. So talking about that, I think, is really important, whether it's new employer orientation or a staff meeting, so people realize that that can happen as well. Might be by email. It might be as they come in and talk to them. All right, I want to finish up here. So when we talk about bullying behavior, you have a policy in place. Again, it's not covered by federal or state law, but it is part of your policy that, that's wonderful that you have that mechanism to follow through and do the investigation. There is power in one voice. One person can make a difference and come forward. Typically, when we look at bullying, um, a lot of people know what's happening. It's not something that's behind the door. Often, people see it and hear it. And typically, will say, "Oh, glad it's not me. I'm glad he or she is not like that with me." And so they don't come forward always. But the fact that you have a policy is a great means for that. Okay? I think I'm one minute over. Any questions or comments?
Well, I will comment. I, I think it was really interesting. Uh, I think most of us have had, uh, similar kinds of training and experiences in the past, but there were some things on there that, you know, admittedly, I, I learned tonight, and is very, very informative. You said that we will get this presentation as well?
Yes. Yep, I'll forward it right away.
Okay.
So, yeah. You're welcome to use any of our materials anytime. So if a staff member or administrator wants to use it with their staff, that's absolutely fine as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for your questions and clarification, too. Thank you.
We have a few action items to, uh, to cover, so, uh, let's entertain motions on these.
I move that the resignations as listed be approved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Grund is here.
Grund is here.
Carried, uh, what do we got, five, six, five, five zero. Thank you.
I move that the retirements as listed be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Aye.
Carried five zero.
I move that the employment of staff as listed be approved.
Second.
Sandy, please.
Aye.
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 Carried five zero.
I move that the transfer of Daniel Slowey, associate principal, seven months at Edison Middle School, to principal, 12 months at Edison Middle School, as listed be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dork?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried five zero.
And I move that the transfers of staff as listed be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Carried five zero.
I'd just like to recognize that Mr. Slowey is here in our audience, and despite his, uh, his new injury, he was playing with his kids, playing football. He's ready to roll with, with Edison.
So this did not happen at school?
It did not happen at school. It just happened in Lake Michigan.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the special board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this just ends, run it as now, we need Madison. Have her text me when she gets to town, and I will let her know our stats.
Okay, all right. Anybody need a quick stretch?
Yeah, five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. I will call the, uh, work session to order. We have five board members present. We're also joined by the superintendent, and we have Jamie Barbian, president of ICSC, and Noah Becker, both from West High School. Thank you, guys. Glad to have you here. And, um, we also, although I don't know if we have anybody here to, to speak for the open session, but I will mention this, that the board will provide our community with two different opportunities during our meeting tonight to speak before the board. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda, or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meetings all prohibits the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board also will permit public participation during agenda items that the Board of Education will be voting on, as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation, participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes. The timekeeper will let you know when your five minutes has ended. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments, such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by board members, is prohibited. And the, uh, meeting is being recorded and is available on our website. And do we have anybody who is speaking in open forum? Looks like not. So with that, we will move right to teaching and learning. And Katie, will you?
I will.
In my stead, please?
Yes.
Okay.
We have discussion item, achievement gap reduction interview report. Is that?
So basically, this is a report that we, we share each year on our achievement gap reduction schools. This is just a report that we provide for, uh, if there's, uh, if there's a need for additional conversation or presentation, we can, um, be, be able to, we can do that in, in August. Basically, this is just a report to the board. In the past, we've done, um, variety things with presentation, but this outlines how our achievement gap reduction schools are doing. And if there are additional questions, that's something that can, can, uh, to, to, uh, I'll start over.
So our achievement gap reduction report, uh, basically outlines how our achievement gap reduction schools are doing. The, uh, teaching and learning team is prepared to provide, uh, answers to any questions the board may have on the report, but what we would like to do is, is have those questions submitted so that we can put together a presentation for August, if that is what the board would like. Um, previously, this was something that was presented as a standalone, but that's not a requirement of the state. It, it, uh, sometimes folds better into how the schools are doing overall, rather than a standalone of just the AGR schools. But if the board has specific questions, we recommend that you, uh, address them to me and/or Andrea Lanware, and we can answer those questions in August in a more formal report, if that's what the board desires.
Has everyone, has everyone had the opportunity to review the report? And if there are questions or concerns, if you would contact, unless you want to?
Sure.
Um, so what do you, what is done with the report, with the findings? What's, is there a plan that happens after that?
Sure. Uh, actually, there's, there's quite a bit of planning that, that is, is part of the report. Our school success planning process is, uh, embedded with AGR and what we do with AGR. Specifically, this is a change from, uh, the state when we worked with Sage previously, which was small class size only. Uh, the state now offers, uh, multiple opportunities for, uh, different ways to intervene with schools through, uh, literacy coaching and, and other aspects. Uh, one, one result that we saw that was quite positive was the schools that were using the Bridges pilot had better-than-average math results. So we're seeing, even though that was just a pilot and it's full implementation for next year, it was a foreshadowing. Uh, but what this allows us to do is, because some of these, these schools tend to be our, our poorest schools, of course, because the AGR piece, it allows us to see how the different strategies that we're implementing in the different schools are paying off. So if there's a school that's, that's, uh, having more success than another, we can compare and take those ideas from the school that's more successful and apply them to the schools that are less, less successful. And likewise, if there's a school that's struggling, we can dig deeper into, uh, to seeing what the issues are within that school. Gwen has shared, uh, quite often, information on, on how we're doing with, with a variety of schools. Just as, for instance, we're, uh, digging more deeply into our bilingual education programming to make sure that that is more closely aligned with our workshop process, uh, because we weren't seeing the results that we hoped to with our bilingual classrooms. So we're making sure that our universal for our bilingual students is strong. So those are a couple of examples of how, how we use the AGR report, uh, to inform the strategic work that the directors and the teaching and learning team do with the school.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
So, again, you said that we're going to have a, another report on this in August.
If, if desired.
If desired.
So basically, uh, the AGR report is a report that's submitted to the board twice a year, and we can either do it as a full presentation of, of the results, or it could be presented, as we had talked about, uh, within our monitoring report, having a deeper dive into a, um, into the results of how the schools are doing in August. And so this could be a subs, I think, I would recommend that we use this as a subset report within that larger retreat, retreat process.
This report, right now, as it stands, is available to the public on, on Neptune. And if, uh, folks who might be watching this or, or looking at that had questions or concerns, who should they contact?
They can contact myself or Andrea Lanware, who is, um, basically coordinating the, the reporting on this. I would probably say Andrea would be the best person to, to contact directly, because she's the person closest to the, the issues at hand and has the most direct knowledge of, of the intricacies of, uh, the school's success plans.
Okay, thanks.
Andrew.
I'm not sure if this is some, I guess, depending on, depending on your reply, may or may not need more detailed information. Um, are we, um, is that 18 to one or 30 to two ratio? Is that a, barring something unusual, kid coming in six weeks before the end of the year or something, is that a, is that an absolute forced split? If there are 19 kids on September 3rd, are there now a nine, a job posting and a 10 and a nine?
Uh, we, we split as, as needed. We, of course, we look at, uh, the overall needs of the building, too. There's, there's occasion when we have to look at, uh, is there a student that might, um, be involved in another classroom? But, uh, for instance, I, what, I guess what I'm trying to say is, the, as we have enrollment in and out, it's important for us to closely monitor, and we don't want to make a decision too early. For instance, if we look at the scores now, or not scores, but the number, number of students in each, each classroom, there are some schools that we might say, "Oh, let's bump up and, and add an extra teacher there." But the thing is, is that, uh, three weeks from now, we might look at the, at the seats again, and they might be down three or four, and we're actually looking at, uh, then dissolving another section. So we're trying to be as careful as possible, but we do hold really, really tightly to those, those ratios.
If you look at, um, there's more flexibility with AGR, and I think what you, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, were you referencing 18, and once they get to 19, it tips and then you split it, right?
Right. A hard limit as opposed to our, as in our non-AGR schools.
Right.
Currently, we have the, the guideline, and, um, internally, there is a certain number that, as we've discussed, I think, in, in district practice is a hard limit. There's, with a little room between there. And I think, um, I'd like to see us codify that in a future board meeting, but, um, it's a little, it's a little tighter, and, I mean, it's not as tight as it was in Sage, where it was 15 to one, 30 to two, or you must split, even if splitting made a eight and a seven. But with 18 to one, I guess, are we running, are we running classrooms of 20? Because there's 20 first graders in a building, and it seems to make more sense, or no way?
If you look at, um, and I think it's on page six, and, and I know Terry knows this as well, there is some flexibility in terms of how, once they hit a certain level, they can address it, if I'm not, if I am saying this accurately, that you could bring in a para.
Right.
There are some different ways to address the number.
Right.
So you could technically have a class that was 20, for example, but you would need to have brought in some additional supports or resources. You might have interventionists coming in, some things pushing in. So it doesn't automatically split like it used to have to when it hit the number, if I'm not, if I understand this accurately.
Right.
But, but typically, they've been keeping close to that number?
Right. Additional, additional supports are required at that time. So
Correct.
We look at a split as, as quite often the, the choice we make, but if it's a, if it's a single-track school, for instance, and, and there isn't, there isn't the room, uh, we wouldn't necessarily split right away to have two classes of 10 when there isn't a classroom for it and, and, uh, bring in a portable or something like that, if, uh, if there was the support there with an extra paraprofessional or a, an additional teacher to, to provide assistance.
So when we talk about 20, and I see you got the schools with 24, you did hire a teacher, and it grows to 24. It's not that you started intentionally with 24. And so the, the largest you, the largest you started at, um, so I'm, I'm hoping that some of these 23s and 24s were with additions throughout the, the year?
Yes. And so I think what would probably be most helpful is, uh, I can, I can gather your questions, and I can make sure that, that Andrea and Ann are, uh, ready to present on that in August when they come back, or at the next board meeting, they could also share as well. They have, um, they're very, uh, very careful about making sure the needs of the, the students are met in each of the buildings. Uh, quite often, we're, we're having to be careful to a degree from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, but we are very, very, very careful to make sure that each student is served with, with a proper ratio. So I think, uh, for them to describe their decision-making process and how they're working with us would probably be more beneficial than, uh, me guessing for them at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Can you, Andrew, can you clarify what you mean by, you hope we would codify?
Oh, well, I mean, it's no secret that AGR has separate ratios, but I've advocated publicly for us to have, I guess, two things, the guideline number, but then also a, basically a hard limit at which a class must be split. I understand that we, again, short of the weird situation, someone coming in with six weeks left in the year, et cetera, that we would not allow thirty-one or something like that to run in an elementary school. And we probably would split classrooms much sooner than that. And I know we did get the numbers of that, but I think, I think it's good policy probably to, and I don't, I mean, I have certain suggestions, but I'm interested in the board discussion of some point at which, okay, here's a guideline, here's a goal, here's where it must be split, that a high school class must not be thirty-one, and we're not canceling it either, we're splitting it, we're making two, that kind of thing. Which I realize there is financial implications to that.
And it's interesting, because, and I don't want to take us too far down the road without the people responsible here, but quite often, what's in Infinite Campus right now is not completely representational of who is going to show up September first. So if we, if people were to, if we staffed at a looser level or a tighter level, it wouldn't be representational of who's actually going to show. Right now, the secondary classes, they look like they're relatively full, but because we'll have students moving back and forth, chances are that quite a few of those classes are actually going to end up with fewer students in. So somebody might look in their science classes, for instance, and look and say, oh, I've got twenty-eight kids in my science class, that's going to be really, really challenging because of the safety issues. But when we look at the, and I don't mean to say mortality, because it's not, but when we look at the cohort mortality, who's going to stay with that cohort? It tends to decrease over time, and so you end up with fewer actual students in the seats when things occur. But we always take into account what is the need of the student and what is the need of the teacher within that classroom. But you bring up a good point, Andrew, that the fiscal impact is critical. Mr. Kasha, I'm sure, would agree, and we've had lots of conversations around what can we do as a district to look at some financial changes that would allow us to hold tighter to the ratios that we hope to and make sure all the supports are there for our students. But that's something that I think needs to be shared in detail, because we want to be able to say yes to everything, but the needs of the students need to be first. And so we have to take a look at what some of those financial impacts might be of programmatic changes and other staffing changes and things of that nature. But we do plan on having significant conversation with the board around that, because we agree with you, Andrew, that the ratios are critical.
And I think, I think, sorry, I think back to when I went to Wickway Oak at the end of the year, and there were twenty-six kids in that kindergarten class. It was pretty, there was a lot going on. And I had asked if there was help in there, and they said, on occasion, it was not every day. So that, to me, just sitting in there and viewing that, what was going on, there, I counted, there were twenty-six kids in that class, and that was a kindergarten class. So I think it's important to have some sort of, something that has a little more teeth to it, because that teacher looked like she was drowning, to me.
So I think, as I said, it would be really good if, two weeks from now, or actually, it's next Monday when we meet again, if Andrea and Ann can answer a couple of the questions related to the staffing ratio, but then if there are more specific questions related to the AGR report, we'd be glad to come back in August with a presentation. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, John. Next, we are going to have two more discussion items, posting of standards, our annual posting of the standards.
So once again, we have myself, and joining me will be Mr. Fries. And basically, this is our annual posting of the standards, that is a requirement of the state, but Mr. Fries will walk you through our posting.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, as John said, this memo is simply requesting your approval to complete our annual posting of the standards, as required by state law. This is basically a procedural request. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have. This information, once approved, does get posted publicly on our website, as required by state law. Melissa, is that summarize of it in essence?
This was in addition to school board's obligations passed, I believe, two budgets ago by the state. And we come to you every year at this time with a similar document that notes the standards. You need to approve then that this will be the posting for the website.
Any questions?
Just, would you clarify with the social studies standards, what a C-three framework is, what is that?
Yeah, the college civic community life, it's a framework. They are, it's a national framework that contributed to our development of our curriculum documents. We've frankly always been a smidge ahead of the state. The state had kind of put standards adoption on hold for a number of years after the Common Core, and we got to a point, as a district, where we wanted to move forward with, so we looked, we forecasted out what was going on nationally. The C-three framework was informing most states' development of state-based standards. And the state of Wisconsin did take the C-three framework, and they just, as of May 2018, so just a month and a half ago, did approve new state social studies standards that are based on the C-three framework. So that is, so we're in full alignment there with our curriculum, and we've been reviewing what the state has published, and we'll be making small tweaks as needed to our curriculum documents, but college career civic life, I believe, is what it stands for, sorry.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Carrie, now we'll move that forward. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
And then we have middle school mathematics resources.
I'll invite Ms. Cindy Cantwell to join us at the table here, should you have any questions as well. Tonight, we bring forward a request for approval to purchase the next year of our middle school math resource. About a year ago, the district. Reminds me of when I got the White Album by The Beatles back in, when I was a younger kid, stereos, left ear, right ear, left ear, right ear. So about a year ago, our district purchasing and procurement policies were updated, and purchases of this amount are required to be considered by the Board of Education. So as the memo indicates, this is a one-year request brought forward to continue with the current middle school series for the time being. Because we knew that we would need your approval to continue, we also took this opportunity to ensure that our staff wanted to continue with this series for now. We did the work this spring, as the memo outlines the process that Cindy followed, kind of on point, and I assisted and joined her with some school visits to check in with all of our department chairs and principals to confirm that we are moving in the right direction. Upon your approval of this, assuming that you do approve of this, we will immediately complete the purchase, activate the digital subscriptions, and initiate the distribution process so that there isn't any delay to start the year. I anticipate that a full math resource review will be taking place over the next few years as we continue our professional learning journey at the secondary level, and as we respond to the needs of students coming out of a cohesive and rigorous elementary math experience. Cindy Cantwell, again, is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments? Andrew.
Are there going to be, is this adoption a one-hundred percent online text for the students? Or will there be some, I saw that there's, so the, I got the consumables, but then as far as the, as far as the full book, are there going to be some classroom sets, or are we going all online for the main text?
The student text is considered as consumable as well, so it's the text and workbook pages and things they can write in all at one time. So there's no, the teacher edition is a hard copy, but the student, they don't have a hardbound student edition.
Okay, it's not that we're not getting it, it doesn't exist.
It exists, right.
So there's material that they're going to take home and read that's in a text that's also consumable.
Yes.
Plus the online resource.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Carrie, now we'll move that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Cindy. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. So we'll move on to organizational support work session, and Mr. Becker will ask you to facilitate, please.
All right. Under organizational support, discussion items, business and finance and human resources, we have none. Discussion and public comment, we have business and finance first, with the 2018-19 CISA VII contract update. Any, anything to present or questions or comments?
Annually, we bring forward the CISA contract for your view.
An approval. Tonight's contract is before you, a minor increase in the fees, but otherwise, it's the same services that we've been receiving the past few years.
Questions? All right, then, we'll move forward then. Under human resources, we have first the monitor job description.
We're bringing forward the monitor job descriptions to request that the monitor, the new supervisor brought forward, now that their pay is the same as the monitors, they've asked to have their job title taken to be monitored, because they feel that, and we agree, that the role that they do is not just over the new hour, they have expanded duties that take them other parts of the day. And so if you approve this job description, which we brought up to, we made it more on a date, they've seen it, they've had a chance to look at it and operate anything that they want to do. If you approve this, you're also approving the changes to the job title. And so the new supervisor is not the title that they, now, just to be clear, there, in our system, our BiTech system, they may still see that title, because it's tied to so many things that we, in checking with IT, we're not able to change the title in some of our systems, but they will be posted, the jobs will be posted, monitors, monitors either for elementary or monitors for secondary, and this will be the job.
Ed?
Could you explain a little bit more about, you were saying that some things in IC would still have any new supervisor? I really don't understand if you could expand on that.
It's because, I don't completely understand, but maybe Diane, if you speak to it, it's a very complicated change to make and has a lot of technicals.
We have so many nightly scripts running where information comes from BiTech and goes to many other things, and so with this job title, it's part of all those scripts. And so to go back and change things means we dig into the programming language that takes place behind the scenes, and we have to change all those things. And so that's why, at this time, it would be very difficult to do.
Okay. Still clear as mud.
It's a lot of, I think, it's a lot of the behind-the-scenes programming work that would have to be redone in order to change every field and every piece of data that's in so many of our systems.
Okay, so we're just talking about something with documentation and record-keeping, has nothing to do with the job or the salary?
No.
Okay.
Well, it does affect payroll, is one of the things.
Well, but their pay is already the same.
The pay isn't the same, but in terms, but it might be referred to in more of the new supervisor as than the monitor as its document.
Right, but their job will be posted as the past monitor. There'll be title monitors, and they want to be referred to as monitors when we're talking about them in the workplace, and that can happen.
And can you selectively update the scripts that are just the obvious things where people will see?
Outward-facing, I'll chuck in on that. I'm not sure to the extent that you had inquired, so I can chuck further into that to find out. So you're saying that outward-facing documentation, like an employee online and things like that, would be changed?
Yeah, pay stubs, unless that's already resolved, staff direct, auto-updating of staff directory. I mean, not, I wouldn't, in my individual opinion, I wouldn't want to see a whole lot of program or time spent on just behind-the-scenes that no one will ever see but IT.
Right.
Other questions?
Just as a follow-up to that, Diane, as you move forward, would there be any benefit as we bring on new monitors to code them differently, or would you prefer that we keep them all the same to you, maybe change the system?
Right. Consistency would be the suggestion, until we make a full switch over.
Thank you.
But everyone hired going forward is, will be a monitor after this action?
That is, that is what they're asking, and that's what we would like to see.
Other questions?
So then they would be, everyone is a monitor, so we would have no other, within that new new supervisor, and eventually they would just go away.
Right.
People retired thirty, forty years from now, or whatever. They're young right now.
The current new newers that have talked with us want to be called monitors. They want that name change to be happening, you know, with the new school year. That's what we do.
Other questions? I have one, additional secondary school essential functions. We have, it's not necessarily a big deal, but enough that I wanted to throw it out there. So we have monitors completing locker inspections, yes, with an administrator or school resource officer as directed. I'm just wondering, was there any thought given as to whether something like that rises to the level of, do we want two, you know, full-time salaried staff doing that, as opposed to putting a monitor in that position? Or has that been a practice for some time already, and there's always one full-time staff or SRO, so has it worked well?
We checked on that, and it has been done, but it, as we, I asked for that essential function to be clarified, because, well, because of your concern, because you just don't want to send somebody in. But from my understanding, and I'll clarify that by checking with some of our principals, it is with an administrator and/or an SRO. So two people. And I think it's been successful, as long as you have one or the other. I don't know, Ed, what your experience has been with your principal?
It would always, well, in my experience, there would always be an administrator present.
Always, yeah. But they might need another person, so they may have the monitor go with.
Or to witness.
Yeah, as a secondary.
Not as a primary duty.
Yeah. Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, we'll move that forward, and then we have the site director of after-school programming job description.
This position is being requested to be a full-time position for both two of our schools, Lincoln and Nicolay. This past year, we had the position split fifty percent by administrative intern and fifty percent site director. And the feedback from the principals, the executive directors, and the two individuals who held the position, was that they couldn't do justice to both pieces. And so for this particular position, we're asking that it be a full-time site director. The hours are from seven, excuse me, 10:00 AM to 6:30 PM, and that we've aligning the pay along with, the pay very similar to our nonprofit agencies who also employ site directors, which is about $35,280 roughly. It's a, it, our position is going to be salaried, but it will not be a contracted position. And since we didn't have a full-time job description, we're bringing this to the board for your approval, so you understand that this is something new that's been hired, they'll be hired by the district on a full-time basis with these two schools.
Rhonda?
So what is the job description for that person? And then you said that admin intern, what would they be doing then? Can you just kind of walk through that, once this was created?
The admin intern piece will go away. This will be the full-time job description for that afternoon, after-school program.
So that'll be gone?
This will be the job description, and we'll hire, we'll post these jobs, and we'll hire two individuals, one for Lincoln and one for Nicolay. I'm not sure if there's going to be a backfill to the admin intern positions or not. John, do you know? do you know?
Right, at this point, we're looking at the needs throughout the district, because we want to make sure that with several administrative changes and some of the admin interns being hired into other positions, we want to make sure that the needs of each of the schools are well-served. But the administrative intern positions are, basically, it's a combination position, it's something that's meant as a leadership ladder for some of our new teachers, not new teachers, but people who are new to administration, we want to give them an opportunity to try the role and for us to see how the person is doing within that role. Quite often, it's a recruiting ground for our administrators, even though it starts on a teacher contract, but this is something that we allocate when we look at the overall needs of the building. When we look at the needs of the district, we look at where those individuals are serving. So there will be likely a few changes in where the administrative interns are allocated for the coming year, but that hasn't been fully decided. So with the change here, basically what we're doing is just looking at hiring a site director rather than trying to do the combo positions, because the combination positions weren't very effective, they didn't work well, and we're hiring, we're hiring our own site director rather than having an outside entity do it. Quite often, we've had other community partners hire the site director, and they've been employees of that organization, and in certain circumstances, we found that it's better for us to have our own employee do it. We've also had a situation where we've had the CISA serve as a fiscal agent, and looking at that as not being effective, they charge a 3% fee for being the fiscal agent, so we're looking at not doing that anymore. So basically, we're taking a position that used to be run by the CISA, and we're saving 3% by having it be our own position.
Rhonda?
So it said Nicol, or, yeah, Nicolay and Lincoln School, so is there a possibility that this will transfer them to other schools, or why those two schools?
Yes, there's a possibility that it would transfer to other schools, where there's also a possibility that we would be looking at having an administrative intern split between the two schools. So that will be determined based on the needs of the building and also the needs of the district overall.
So this one position could turn into quite a few throughout the district, possibly?
Not for the site director.
Not for the site director?
No.
So it's just this specific?
Yep.
These are the two schools that we have, that the district provides the after-school program.
Right, basically, right.
So that's the YMCA, that's the reason then?
Right, so basically, the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club, they are the fiscal agent, and they run the after-school programming in multiple sites. We have two sites that we run ourselves, that we have a site director for, but we've been paying, is paying CISA to be our fiscal agent, and so at this point, we're saying, you know, we're grateful for that service, but we're thanking for the 3% that we'll save, we can, we can run that ourselves. So really, we're just, we wanted to bring it to the board because it's a slightly new position, it's something we've had, but something we've had as a subcontract through CISA just as a fiscal agent.
So parents would contact this person then, to get after-school care?
Yep, so it's basically the same as what the community partners are providing as well, it's a very similar position, and we'll be reporting later on administrative interns and other administrative supports for the buildings.
If okay, I know the board will be hopefully approving this next week, but we would like to get this job posted tomorrow, if you're okay with that, because we're, for all intents and purposes, in the middle of summer, and we would like to get this person hired for the opening of the school, if not before, and it would be helpful to get the job posted if you feel that you'd be okay with doing that. We've had, we've had the position, it's just that it was 50% after-school, 50% admin intern, and this formalizes the job description, now that we know it's going to be a 1.0 of the year.
But if the board were to make another decision between now and then, it would just be a posting, and we would just not, we would not hire the position, but posting it now allows us to.
So we wouldn't make any job offers until?
Approved.
Technically, we have to post for five days to include a weekend, so the posting wouldn't come down, because it releases to the end of the, it's Saturday.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, and Lisa Johnson supervises these individuals, and she's the one that made this recommendation and updated the job description to include all of the duties this person does, so.
Her oversight of the after-school programming and summer school has been really beneficial to the district, and her leadership has been important.
So is this, is this going to, is this going to be cost, cost neutral, or less cost, or exactly the same? I mean, if we're replacing half an admin intern, that's actually a higher salary.
The admin intern would be a higher salary, because that's a teacher. I don't know if we're going to replace the admin intern, so that's, I think what John said he's going to be looking at.
But that's a, that's a separate question. I mean, for the moment, I mean, if we did, it probably would not be there, but it might be elsewhere, or it still might.
So at this point, it's a cost reduction, but we'd have to look at the needs overall to see if there were needs for the admin interns at another site, or if not.
And there are some grand dollars as well, right?
So it's unlikely, though, that we would go, we would do this and then have an admin intern at the same school, that would be not in the current plan, at least.
That's how it was costing.
Right.
Okay, all right.
So this would be paid partially out of our after-school grand dollars, whereas the administrative intern is not?
Yes, right.
Anything, anything further on that, other questions? Okay, that concludes the operational support, and then we have a motion for closed session, which I will read, so. And there's no, there was no public comment on these either, okay? All right. "I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985-1C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985-1F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the individual, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, and were involved in such problems or investigations, to wit personnel matters, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985-1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit, contract regarding enrollment study. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided by law. The board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session."
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
George? Aye.
Simpalk?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Carried 5-0, and we will reconvene and cross the hall, Brenda will join us on the phone, I believe.
Yes, she will. She could be in Rosendale, she'll never be in the [inaudible].
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.